This is the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. I know, my feet don't touch the ground, Mayor. So this is the mayor of Norwood. This is his seat. Yes, thank you for having us. He's a little taller than I am, and so I have to really lean forward to get my feet on the ground. I didn't think of that. I wasn't thinking when I got here. So it's April 17, 2025. We're calling to order this meeting. This is a very special meeting because the Commission on Women and Girls is going to present their final recommendations for the year at this meeting. But before we get started, we always do a silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us in silent prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's do introductions from the dais, and we'll loop around. So we'll start over here.
Anne Schooly, prosecuting attorney.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Jeff Ludo, County Administrator.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Kristi Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Amanda Carter.
Thank you. I am going to make a motion. We approve of the minutes of the previous session?
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerall-Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. All right, thank you. So before we go any further, I did want to give an opportunity to the mayor, Victor Schneider. We are in his house. So thank you so much for hosting this meeting. I know there are a number of council members in the audience. I am going to leave it to you to make those introductions, but we are very grateful. Your staff has been fantastic and very hospitable, and we couldn't feel more welcome. So thanks for having us.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. We are very privileged to have you guys sitting in our newly refurbished courtroom council chambers. Really, really council chambers, right? Joe Gears is in the back here. He is the president of council. Sitting next to him is Emily Franzen and Cyrus. Cyrus is an adopted council member. We sat with her nine months. James Fonzel is right here in the back. He is the treasurer for the city of Norwood, been really making significant changes and improvements to the city's treasury. It's very good to have Susan Hoover here, who's a council member also, council member at large. John Brayden is here in the front. He is a council member at large. And John Moore is here. John Moore is another council member. We have members, we have seven members on our city council and a president of council who's also the vice mayor, and we're very pleased that those people are here representing the community. Again, we're very happy to have you here. This building was built in 1915. This building and the original structure had a blue ceiling here, a big ballroom ceiling, which we couldn't open back up. We weren't ready for that. But a lot of you were in the auditorium, the auditorium where there was a reception prior to this. That auditorium was originally one of the big meeting places in the city of Norwood. In 1915, there weren't many buildings like this. And it's, the story is told that it was all the women of the community that got together to build this big, beautiful city hall. They were the driving force in putting this beautiful city hall in place. And one of our, one of the people who worked in the auditor's office, who is a friend of mine, had actually talked about when she was a child, they would have dance recitals up there on the stage in that auditorium. Now, we've sort of repurposed that auditorium for some offices, the mayor's office and the law department. We take care of our lawyers around here, too. But it's also used, just like we used it today, for a reception prior to that. So the city's got a lot of great, great things going on. I was told I only have about 35 or 40 minutes to talk.
We said seconds, Mayor.
But we would like to thank the commission. We are working on Elm Avenue Storm Sewer Project, moving basically an area in our, in our community that has been flooding for 50 years and flooding people's homes. When you have the big storms. Now, it used to be the big storms only came every seven or so years, so you know, you could sort of get by. Well, in the last few years, we've had, you know, a lot more of that. And I'd like to thank the commission. They were helping us out with some funding. The city's got a ton of funding going into it. It's been a huge project, and it gets kicked off this summer, and we're very pleased to have that moving forward. We also have a major improvement going on in the north section of Montgomery Road, basically from the lateral up past, past White Castle. Everybody knows sort of White Castle, you know, that's a good reference point. But we're going to be replacing a water line, main water line, and replacing the lead line connections that go through there. And every one of the water improvements that we make, we're trying to do, remove the lead lines through there also. So that, a lot of that is Ohio EPA funding, which is good, and we're taking advantage of that. And then the last thing I'll talk about is our pedestrian improvement project that is going to go on along Montgomery Road, improve bus stops. We recognize that those buses are great. They bring people in, they take people out. They're great to have. So we're improving the bus stops. We're doing some road thinning. When we had, we had this little company called General Motors here, they had about 3,000 employees that would be let out at times, so you needed this big, huge thoroughfare. We don't need the big, huge thoroughfare. So we're going to bump the curbs out, bump the sidewalks out, and do a lot of improvements right through here, which will be a major improvement to the city. So it's going to be a mess around here. If you come through, like Commissioner Reese says, she spends a lot of money in Norwood. We like to hear that. But if you're coming into Norwood a lot, it's going to be a little bit of a mess for a short period of time. But the final product, as Holly said, the final product is what you're waiting for, and it's going to be beautiful. We're going to repave Montgomery Road from corp line to corp line. That'll be really nice. It'll be nice to have our main thoroughfare moving well. So with that, I'll stop. That's probably plenty. But thank you, thank you all for being here and for the opportunity.
Thank you. Yeah, big, big thank you to the mayor and the members of council that are here. We're really, really grateful for your hospitality and you allowing us to have the meeting here. We try to get out in the community every now and again, so we're thrilled to be out in Norwood. So we're going to move into our presentation. So as was stated before, this is a presentation of the Commission on Women and Girls. It is the culmination of a year's worth of work by this group. Just as a reminder, this group was established in 2017. I was the second woman elected to the county commission and wanted to raise the voice of women and girls in the community. And so established the commission, 20 women, 10 girls, and each and every member has had a part in the presentation and in the work that this commission has done. So we're very grateful. We've had about 150 women and girls participate in this endeavor over the years. And so thank you, thank you, especially to all the women and girls that stuck it out. We meet on Saturday mornings once a month. It's volunteer, and it's a big commitment. And it's clear that you're dedicated to this work. And so thank you so much for spending that time and for being here tonight. And we'll roll into the presentation. I know Mary's going to recognize the members. Before we do that, though, I do want to recognize we've got a couple of alum in the room from the Commission on Women and Girls. We've got a lot of partners here tonight who have helped inform the work and will be partners in applying the work in the community. And so thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it. And then, of course, Lila, Maisie, Victoria, and Kevin for helping organize the night. And Mary Mountie, who is the program coordinator for the Commission on Women and Girls, the rock star in the room. Thank you, Mary. And it goes without saying that my colleagues, without all three of us, this doesn't work and it doesn't move forward. And so this commission has been extremely supportive of the Commission on Women and Girls. I'm extremely grateful for that. We've provided the resolutions and the reports to all commissioners. So we're all read up on the work, and we'll be voting on the resolutions in a little while. But it doesn't happen without my colleagues and the work that we do collectively to improve the lives of women and girls in this community. So commissioners, should we roll right into the presentation? We good? Okay, all right. So Mary Mountie, come to the podium, and we will roll into the presentation of the Commission on Women and Girls.
Thank you so much. Thank you, commissioners, for your ongoing support, certainly for the commission and all of our work. I'm going to jinx this by trying to forward it here. Oh, there we go. So this is, this is a picture of the night that our, this iteration of the commission was appointed. And we certainly did that at a Board of County Commissioners meeting. And you can see how excited we all are then. And fast forward nine months, we're really proud of what we're going to present here today. So I did want to take a moment just to recognize those that are here and then certainly those that are not here but have served this year. So our student members, first and foremost, these come from high schools across all of Hamilton County. We are extremely intentional about ensuring that we have a variety and a diverse population of folks. So not only girls from different high schools, but students who have different life experiences. And the same goes for the women that serve as well. So our student members are Margaret Baker, and feel free, if you'd like to stand, you are welcome to, Margaret Baker, Emery Charles, Madison Crawford, Sarah Garvey, Greta Linzer, Enyanam Nevis, Susina Tafara, Sanaya Washington, and Cameron Wilkinson. Thank you, ladies, for your dedication. Our student members serve one-year terms, and so this is the culmination of their year. And so while many of them will move on to other things, we appreciate that they've given the last year and one Saturday every single month to dedicate to this work and to improving the lives of other students and other women and girls in our community. Our adult members, who I will read, are actually appointed to two-year terms. And so these are the members that currently make up, 10 are in their second year and 10 are in their first year. So when I call their names, if you wouldn't mind standing, Annalise Cahill, Natasha Cowan, Christian Davis, Melissa Davis, Benta Diop, Erin Elliott, Anita Eschleman, Stephanie Fischesser, Kelsey Goins, Cynthia Jones, Jamie Krenler, Lisa Kwan, Megan Lebenow, Jaden Riggs, Yolanda Scher, Laura Sullivan, Leah Taylor, Jamila Watson, and Pomona White. Thank you, ladies, for your service. So thank you. I'm just going to give, just a, I have to have the opportunity to thank all of them in the proper way and really want to frame this work for all of you and for those at home who might be listening. So the Commission on Women and Girls originated as, Commissioner Drehouse said, from a desire to hear directly from female voices on a wide range, from a wide range of ages and lived experiences, to provide a direct avenue of representation for their personal experiences, challenges, and victories here in our community. Over, or once a month for nine months, in their free weekend time, these women and girls come together and create a productive community by bonding over their shared lived experiences and the future that they see for our community. They stand before you today, determined to solve community problems in our community, and the recommendations are a path to a better future for all of us. Currently, as I'm sure all of you are aware, our existing systemic structures do not support the average American female experience. Period poverty, inequitable pay, and gender-based violence are just a few of the issues that result from this lack of support. These examples point to one simple truth, that without partnerships, without community organizations, and without government resources and intervention, women in our community are placed at a disadvantage from the beginning. This means that women must work harder, stand up stronger, and speak louder to accomplish the same life goals as their male counterparts. The inequitable environment surrounding women and girls does not allow them to fulfill their full potential, leaving a gap between their capabilities and their accomplishments. The presentations by the women and girls today come, or that will come today, were developed over months of deliberation, rigorous research, and impactful community outreach. The combination of women and girls from all walks of life in our community on this commission provide an interesting lens to view gender-based issues in our society. By examining their lived experiences at all different ages, we can pinpoint areas of opportunity for Hamilton County to improve support for its female residents. This work is more important today than ever. The sizable financial and material investments made by this board and those before you have been critical to the impact they and so many community initiatives have accomplished. It has been an honor to facilitate the important and insightful work of the Commission on Women and Girls and act alongside these very intelligent and purposeful ladies. Our hope is not that the work for the commission ends tonight, but rather to begin a new chapter of ongoing efforts to equalize the playing field between residents in our county. The presentation of the women and girls will start now, and I'm going to pass, pass this over to our first group. They're going to go by committee. And if you haven't had the opportunity, we do have a copy of the presentation in the back, which you can grab afterwards. But they will come up, one adult and one student member of each committee, to present on not only the issue that they've identified as their committee that they wanted to tackle, but to provide the research and insights into why this is something that they've wanted to tackle, and to then offer solutions by way of recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. So first and foremost, please welcome our Social Mobility and Stability Committee.
Hi, my name is Susina Tafara, and I am a first-year member, and I am a junior at Anderson High School.
Hi, I'm Dana Bisignani. I'm also a first-year member, and I am the director of the Women's Center at the University of Cincinnati.
We thank you for allowing us to stand before you today to speak on expanding pathways for women and girls in the trades, and we are here to represent the Social Mobility and Stability Committee, representing Dana, Emery Charles, Anita Eschleman, Stephanie Fincher, Cindy Jones, Lisa Wan, Megan, and me.
All right. So, there we go. So we wanted to talk initially a little bit about the problem that inspired us to present this resolution. So since 2022, about 23% of girls under the age of 18 living in the state of Ohio do live in poverty. That number has remained fairly static despite changes in the population in the state. In Hamilton County specifically, 17.3% of women live below the poverty line, and that number is even higher for women of color and particularly for black women. So in addition, we know that according to the 2028 Jobs Outlook report, about 31% of women are more likely than their male counterparts to earn less than a self-sufficient wage, partially because of the industries that they are primarily in. We know that African-American women are also less likely than their white counterparts to earn a self-sufficient wage. So there's that double whammy, again, for women of color. So we can see clearly that both girls and women need greater access to pathways to, for stable, good-paying jobs to support both themselves and their families. And in addition, Hamilton County, we know, needs a steady supply of local, skilled trades workers for our growth as well.
In Hamilton County Public High Schools, boys outnumber girls in the Great Oaks Program, which is a high school that offers training in various career paths, by a ratio of two to one. When girls do enroll, it's in traditionally caregiving fields, like nursing or cosmetology. This isn't just a statistic. It's a missed opportunity. We asked students in a survey that went out to my high school, what would encourage them to consider a field in the trades. One student responded and said, "People not being so closed off to the idea of women doing labor jobs." This quote in itself- This quote in itself speaks volumes. Girls are interested, but the perception that the trades are just for boys is holding them back. We need to open doors, challenge stereotypes, and make sure that girls know that every path, from welding to construction to engineering, is open to them too. Now, speaking briefly on the benefits of this initiative, by expanding access to apprenticeships and skilled trades that offer good living wages, we not only empower individuals, we supply our county with the workforce it needs. A more diverse and skilled labor force lifts families out of poverty and strengthens the economic future of our entire community.
So we want to go briefly through our recommendations to the county commissioners tonight. The first one is to renew previous support for the Building Futures Program. We know that you all have supported that in the past, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. To support access to reliable transportation for program participants, we know that's a continuing barrier for that program. We are also recommending that there is additional sustainable support in collaboration with other community partners, of course, to remove key barriers, especially for women and other caregivers participating in the program. So this would include, for example, support for women-only cohorts, they're recruiting for their first women-only cohort right now, and as a result of conversations with the Urban League, who runs this program, support for after-hours childcare, particularly for those participants who don't meet that threshold for qualifying for TANF, which would qualify them for some childcare vouchers. But there's a group that really cannot access that either, so they especially need support. Again, not just women, but all caregivers run into that barrier of after-hours childcare. So we do want to acknowledge that that, oh, this is not the updated one, I'm sorry. The initial sort of support for Building Futures did come from the Hamilton County of about $225,000. That pot of money is now starting to run out, so that's part of why we're asking for renewed support. But they have run three cohorts in their first year with a total of about 48 participants. Seventeen participants are currently enrolled in the cohort they're running now. They're aiming to run that first women-only cohort this year, and then by 2026, expand to five total cohorts. So this program is growing and needs support. So we would also recommend that the Commission convene a coalition of thought partners for the purpose of amplifying the work of existing workforce programs, combining resources and fostering collaboration and cooperation to further expand pathways for girls and women in the trades. There's a lot of good work going on, but much of it is siloed, and putting all of the horses behind one plow, so to speak, would help get that harvested faster. Our last recommendation would be to charge this coalition to organize an annual day to collectively celebrate and promote the trades in Hamilton County in partnership with existing career fairs hosted by the County Commission, Ohio Means Jobs, and others, to be attended by high school students as well as job-seeking adults, and in collaboration with Hamilton County Schools Trades Education Programs such as Great Oaks that Susina mentioned. So in closing, that's why we're asking you to support more pathways for girls and women in the trades, along with our other community partners who are already on board and support this resolution, including the Urban League of Southwest Ohio, whose Building Future programs we discussed, the AFL-CIO Labor Council, the Women's Fund, and the Workforce Council of Southwest Ohio, among others. Thank you.
Thank you. There we go.
Can I ask you some questions? Hold. We're going to hold questions.
We're going to hold questions?
Yeah, we're going to hold questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is our Pay Equity Committee.
Hi, my name is Greta Linsner. I'm a sophomore at Walnut Hills High School. Oh, and it's my first year on the committee.
And I'm Yalanda Sher. I'm the Chief People Officer for the YMCA of Greater Cincinnati, and I am in my second year of the Commission on Women and Girls.
Before we begin, I would like to thank Anna Albee for being here. She helped us with some of the information on our report, so thank you.
The members of our Pay Equity Committee include Greta Linsner of Walnut Hills High School, Maya Nevis of Colrain High School. Our women include Annalise Cahill, Jamie Krenler, Kelsey Goines, Leigh Taylor, and myself. The goal of the Pay Equity Committee is to reduce barriers for women in the workplace. Some of our goals include expanding the Pay Equity Commitment, of which we have been completing over the last several years, improving lactation rooms for nursing mothers, and exploring paid leave initiatives within the state of Ohio. The Pay Equity Committee has conducted research and has found that for every $1 earned by white men, women earn anywhere from $0.58 to $0.94, depending on their race. Hispanic women earning $0.58, Black women at the lowest earning $0.67, white women at $0.80, and Asian women earning $0.94.
On March 5, 2025, we held our Pay Equity Commitment Signing, where we had a record number of 51 new organizations sign the commitment, bringing the total to more than 170 employers in Hamilton County. And our first recommendation is to continue the annual Pay Equity Commitment Signing Day during the Women's History Month in March for employers throughout Hamilton County to commit to best pay equity practices with a goal of adding at least 40 new organizations each year. Our second recommendation is to advocate for the implementation of lactation rooms with a fridge, a comfortable seating area, and well-marked signage in all Hamilton County-owned facilities, including stadiums, as well as set an example and provide best practices for municipalities and organizations within Hamilton County that may want to implement lactation rooms in their own facilities. Our third recommendation is to support statewide organizations through the research and exploration of policies to provide paid leave to all Ohioans in order to reduce barriers for people, especially women, in the workplace. That's it.
Multitasking. Thank you very much, Pay Equity Committee. Please welcome the Health and Self-Identity Committee.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jaden Riggs. I use she/her pronouns. I am on my first year serving on the Commission.
Hi, my name is Sarah Garvey. I'm a senior at Corin High School, and this is my first year. We are here on behalf of the Health and Self-Identity Committee. Our other members are Pomona White, Maggie Baker, Cameron Wilkinson, and Erin Elliott. Our initiative is DASH, Driving Accessibility, Safety, and Health. Those who will be impacted by this initiative are those who identify with developmental disability and receive services and funding within Hamilton County. Here are some figures about those with disabilities in Ohio. Ohio is the seventh-largest state economy. 23.5% of Ohio children 18 or younger have a disability. 26.9% to 36.1% of adults in Ohio have a disability, and 53.4% of those are women.
So when we were talking amongst our group about why we wanted to do this, we collectively observed that there were vast gaps in services that were offered for individuals who have a developmental disability, as well as those who serve those individuals known as direct support providers. When we provide opportunities to support DSPs, we foster a community of inclusion and uplift the lives of those who are marginalized. By supporting DSPs, we can see a few different outcomes. Most importantly, we are able to support DSPs by giving them specialized training, making them more employable, also creating more employee retention for those DSPs. They also gain a strong sense of loyalty within that and therefore also reduce employee turnover. Also, by supporting the DSPs, we are directly supporting those who have a developmental disability. They will receive and feel a stronger sense of felt safety, minimize an ACE score, which is also known as adverse childhood experiences, as most DSPs work with individuals who are under the age of 18. It also improves regulation for those individuals and fosters an overall sense of belonging. So it's important to understand who and what is a direct support provider. So as I mentioned before, a direct support provider works directly with an individual who has a cognitive or developmental disability. Some of their tasks can include planning meals, grocery shopping, they do a lot of documentation, support with personal care, helping those individuals get out to do activities or engage with the community. They also do, like I said, a lot of documentation and oftentimes have to do quite a bit of travel for their jobs as they are directly serving those individuals in their homes or in institutions. So some fast facts that are important to recognize, 25, between 25% and 43% of DSPs report distress in their jobs. These individuals are tasked with very physical and emotional toll while they are working, and that can create a lot of stress, both in their personal and professional lives. Studies estimate that 4.5 million people in the U.S. are direct support providers. Of those, 87% are women, and 53% are women of color. So as you can see by those statistics, these roles are directly related to women and women who are minorities. It's critical that direct support professionals have competence and confidence, as well as ethical decision-making skills within the guidance necessary to provide quality support, and that they have access to a career path that is aligned with ongoing professional development opportunities. There's also a nationwide shortage of direct support providers, and that adversely impacts those who have an intellectual disability. It also impacts the DSPs directly because they are tasked with more clients or longer working hours. So how are people who have a developmental disability impacted by their DSPs? The research indicates that when providers are treated with dignity and respect, those who have a developmental disability were more likely to have the following outcomes. They were more likely to have health continuity and security, a stronger sense of independence, a, excuse me, free from abuse and neglect. They were treated with respect and were given fair treatment. And lastly, the independence and right to choose their services were more likely granted to those who had a disability. So how organizations treat their employees directly impacts those employees and then also impacts the individuals that they serve.
We recommend that the Hamilton County Commissioners, in conjunction with Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services, prioritize support for direct service professionals or DSPs by investing in ongoing training and education opportunities, expanding data-backed innovations to promote DSP retention and satisfaction, advocating for increased state funding for our DSPs. We also recommend that the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls and the Health and Self-Identity Committee remain committed to bettering the lives of those who identify with a developmental disability in Hamilton County. The Commission also remains committed to supporting and uplifting the goals of local organizations and programs. Thank you very much.
And last, but certainly not least, our Safety Committee.
Good evening. My name is Sanaya Washington. I'm a sophomore at Walnut Hills High School, and I'm a first year.
Hi, my name's Melissa Davis. I'm a second-year member, and I work for NEOMI Manufacturing.
Today, we are here to present our recommendations to combat intimate partner violence among women and girls. We are presenting on behalf of the Safety Committee, including Natasha Cohen, Madison Crawford, Christian Davis, Melissa Davis, Benta Diop, Laura Sullivan, and Jamila Watson.
So let's begin by acknowledging the reality. Women and girls in Hamilton County are facing increasing threats from domestic violence, teen dating abuse, and growing mental health crisis. Statewide data shows that over one in three Ohioans will experience intimate partner violence in their lifetime, and the majority of survivors report facing challenges, especially in court systems that are meant to protect them. We're also seeing a sharp increase in high-risk behaviors among girls. These trends are urgently and deeply concerning.
There are organizations in the community that have made significant progress to address intimate partner violence. However, many of these programs are at risk due to federal funding cuts.
So here locally, we're fortunate enough to have organizations like the YWCA of Greater Cincinnati and Women Helping Women on the front lines, providing critical services for survivors and their families, such as education, advocacy, and prevention efforts. These organizations have made tremendous progress, but now many of their lifesaving programs are at risk due to federal funding, federal funding cuts. So without sustained investment, survivors may be forced to make the heartbreaking choice between staying in abusive situations or facing homelessness. Tiffany Wilson, the Director of Shelter Services at the YWCA, highlights the urgency and quoted, "Without federal funding, the 630 survivors and their children who fled abuse in 2024 seeking shelter and safety at the YWCA would have to make dangerous decisions to either remain in a domestically violent situation or being unsheltered and possibly homeless." And we simply just cannot let this happen.
Supporting survivors is a shared responsibility. As gender-based violence increases, funding is essential. Our recommended resolution strengthens crisis response and advocacy to support survivors. As you can see by the quotes, two strong female leaders in the community, Kristin Scherplin, President and CEO of Women Helping Women, and Yvette Simpson, President and Founder of Yvette Simpson LLC, both support the recommendations because they know what is needed in the community.
So our recommendations. These recommendations allow the Commission to play a proactive role in addressing resources for victims and preventative measures for young people. So one, we endorse an advocate for a trauma-responsive survivor-centered, evidence-based domestic violence court. Two, expand trauma-response wraparound services, including evidence-based prevention methods. And three, a youth-led summit to focus on prevention, education, and restoration.
With your support, the teen summit can become reality. We thank you for considering our recommendations, and we look forward to your support in making Hamilton County safer for women, girls, and all families.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead. So at this time, I would welcome any questions that you may have, Commissioners, that certainly our Commission members can address, if you have any.
Thank you. Thank you again for the work. Thank you for the presentation. It's clear that you all, we know this, we did a lot of work, you did a lot of work, a lot of research. Community partners are in the room, so once again, thank you for being so thoughtful as you brought the resolutions forward to this Commission. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for comments and questions. Commissioner Summer O'Doumas.
Thank you. Thank you all for your presentations, and it's just obvious to me, as was said earlier, lots of work has been done, lots of collaboration and partnerships, and you have to do that to make all of this happen. And it's also obvious to me that these recommendations obviously need to be passed. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, I want to echo that. I want to thank you for your hard work. I do want to also commend Commissioner President Dreehouse for creating this years ago, and I'm, thank you, Mary Maui, for taking it to the next level, and I'm always happy to support this. What I love about this Commission, it's not just, you know, meetings and nothing happens. There is a lot of great work that's come out of this Commission that we've put into policy and that we've passed, and we have implemented. So, happy
A few different outcomes. Most importantly, we are able to support DSPs by giving them specialized training, making them more employable, also creating more employee retention for those DSPs. They also gain a strong sense of loyalty within that and therefore also reduce employee turnover. Also, by supporting the DSPs, we are directly supporting those who have a developmental disability. They will receive and feel a stronger sense of felt safety, minimize an ACE score, which is also known as adverse childhood experiences, as most DSPs work with individuals who are under the age of 18. It also improves regulation for those individuals and fosters an overall sense of belonging. So it's important to understand who and what is a direct support provider. So as I mentioned before, a direct support provider works directly with an individual who has a cognitive or developmental disability. Some of their tasks can include planning meals, grocery shopping, they do a lot of documentation, support with personal care, helping those individuals get out to do activities or engage with the community. They also do, like I said, a lot of documentation and oftentimes have to do quite a bit of travel for their jobs as they are directly serving those individuals in their homes or in institutions. So some fast facts that are important to recognize, 25, between 25% and 43% of DSPs report distress in their jobs. These individuals are tasked with very physical and emotional toll while they are working, and that can create a lot of stress, both in their personal and professional lives. Studies estimate that 4.5 million people in the U.S. are direct support providers. Of those, 87% are women and 53% are women of color. So as you can see by those statistics, these roles are directly related to women and women who are minorities. It's critical that direct support professionals have competence and confidence, as well as ethical decision-making skills within the guidance necessary to provide quality support, and that they have access to a career path that is aligned with ongoing professional development opportunities. There's also a nationwide shortage of direct support providers, and that adversely impacts those who have an intellectual disability. It also impacts the DSPs directly because they are tasked with more clients or longer working hours. So how are people who have a developmental disability impacted by their DSPs? The research indicates that when providers are treated with dignity and respect, those who have a developmental disability were more likely to have the following outcomes: They were more likely to have health continuity and security, a stronger sense of independence, a, excuse me, free from abuse and neglect. They were treated with respect and were given fair treatment. And lastly, the independence and right to choose their services were more likely granted to those who had a disability. So how organizations treat their employees directly impacts those employees and then also impacts the individuals that they serve.
We recommend that the Hamilton County Commissioners, in conjunction with Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services, prioritize support for direct service professionals or DSPs by investing in ongoing training and education opportunities, expanding data-backed innovations to promote DSP retention and satisfaction, advocating for increased state funding for our DSPs. We also recommend that the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls and the Health and Self-Identity Committee remain committed to bettering the lives of those who identify with a developmental disability in Hamilton County. The Commission also remains committed to supporting and uplifting the goals of local organizations and programs. Thank you very much.
And last, but certainly not least, our Safety Committee.
My name is Sanaya Washington. I'm a sophomore at Wana Hills High School, and I'm a first year.
Hi, my name's Melissa Davis. I'm a second-year member, and I work for NEMI Manufacturing.
Today, we are here to present our recommendations to combat intimate partner violence among women and girls. We are presenting on behalf of the Safety Committee, including Natasha Cohen, Madison Crawford, Kristin Davis, Melissa Davis, Bensha Diop, Laura Sullivan, and Jamila Watts.
So let's begin by acknowledging the reality. Women and girls in Hamilton County are facing increasing threats from domestic violence, teen dating abuse, and growing mental health crisis. Statewide data shows that over, that over one in three Ohioans will experience intimate partner violence in their lifetime, and the majority of survivors report facing challenges, especially in court systems that are meant to protect them. We're also seeing a sharp increase in high-risk behaviors among girls. These trends are urgently and deeply concerning.
There are organizations in the community that have made significant progress to address intimate partner violence. However, many of these programs are at risk due to federal funding cuts.
So here locally, we're fortunate enough to have organizations like the YWCA of Greater Cincinnati and Women Helping Women on the front lines, providing critical services for survivors and their families, such as education, advocacy, and prevention efforts. These organizations have made tremendous progress, but now many of their life-saving programs are at risk due to federal funding, federal funding cuts. So without sustained investment, survivors may be forced to make the heartbreaking choice between staying in abusive situation or facing homelessness. Tiffany Wilson, the Director of Shelter Services at the YWCA, highlights the urgency and quoted, "Without federal funding, the 630 survivors and their children who fled abuse in 2024 seeking shelter and safety at the YWCA would have to make dangerous decisions to either remain in a domestically violent situation or being unsheltered and possibly homeless." And we simply just cannot let this happen.
Supporting survivors is a shared responsibility. As gender-based violence increases, funding is essential. Our recommended resolution strengthens crisis response and advocacy to support survivors. As you can see by the quotes, two strong female leaders in the community, Kristin Sherplin, President and CEO of Women Helping Women, and Yvette Simpson, President and Founder of Yvette Simpson LLC, both support the recommendations because they know what is needed in the community.
So our recommendations. These recommendations allow the Commission to play a proactive role in addressing resources for victims and preventative measures for young people. So one, we endorse an advocate for a trauma-responsive survivor-centered, evidence-based domestic violence court. Two, expand trauma-response wraparound services, including evidence-based prevention methods. And three, a youth-led summit to focus on prevention, education, and restoration.
With your support, the teen summit can become reality. We thank you for considering our recommendations, and we look forward to your support in making Hamilton County safer for women, girls, and all families.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead. So at this time, I would welcome any questions that you may have, Commissioners, that certainly our Commission members can address, if you have any.
Thank you. Thank you again for the work. Thank you for the presentation. It's clear that you all, we know this, we did a lot of work, you did a lot of work, a lot of research. Community partners are in the room, so once again, thank you for being so thoughtful as you brought the resolutions forward to this Commission. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for comments and questions. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you all for your presentations, and it's just obvious to me, as was said earlier, lots of work has been done, lots of collaboration and partnerships, and you have to do that to make all of this happen. And it's also obvious to me that these recommendations obviously need to be passed. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Yeah, I want to echo that. I want to thank you for your hard work. I do want to also commend Commissioner President Drehouse for creating this years ago, and thank you, Mary Maui, for taking it to the next level, and I'm always happy to support this. What I love about this Commission, it's not just, you know, meetings and nothing happens. There is a lot of great work that's come out of this Commission that we've put into policy and that we've passed, and we have implemented. So happy with these recommendations today and happy to support them and start to try to move them forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, all three of us have had these resolutions. We were given them in advance, so we've been able to go through them. We have the report as well, and the PowerPoint, all available in the back of the room for those of you that would be interested on your way out to take a copy of it. It's really good work. It's really powerful work, and I'm really, really proud of what you all have done. So with that, with your deference, Commissioners, I'm going to move up the regular agenda items one through four, and we can pass the resolutions by name only. So the first one is a resolution, and I'm going to make a motion to approve of the resolution to expand pathways for girls and women in the trades.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. The next one, I'm going to make a motion to approve of the resolution directing the administration to continue reducing barriers to pay equity in Hamilton County.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to approve of the resolution supporting driving accessibility, safety, and health for individuals with developmental disabilities.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. And then lastly, I'm going to make a motion to approve of the resolution supporting the development of a comprehensive community empowerment plan to address intimate partner violence among women and girls in marginalized communities in Hamilton County.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you for your work. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. Because I don't, we did pictures when they got sworn, so I think we're good. Thank you all so much. Thank you for your work. Carry on in the other room if you'd like. I'm sure there's still plenty of food and drink available, so thank you so much for what you've done. And thank you, Mary Maui, for your work. All right, we're going to move through the rest of our agenda. Next is public comment. Do we have any comment cards?
None.
Anybody online?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move to comments and motions of the Commissioners. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Thank you. Just a few comments as we move forward. I did meet with Mary Maui about the Commission on Women and Girls earlier this week to kind of, as you were saying, President Drehouse, to get a better understanding of what each resolution is and if we had any questions. So had a good meeting with her. Also went down for the FIFA World Cup Trophy Tour down at TQL. The World Trophy is going all through the United States, and they will have a world game at TQL in June of this year. So you'll be hearing more about those festivities, so it was very nice to be there. Francie Pepper's memorial service was this past weekend, and I did, they were asking instead of flowers, in lieu of flowers, to send donations to Women Helping Women, which I did, and was glad that I was able to do that in her honor. And I was part of a Black Music Walk of Fame interview earlier this week to get ready for the presentation or the activities that are going to be going on down at the Walk of Fame. And then I also met with Bill Berwinkle, who is my rep for the Veterans Commission. He is just an absolute wonderful rep. He had a little bit of a dilemma because he's on the Great Parks Board, and in the legislation from years ago, you can't be on the park board and be on the Veterans Commission. I don't know why. But anyway, he was actually going to give his stipend, you know, back to the veterans, and so it caused a problem. So I got his resignation just yesterday, Tuesday. But of course, he's so witty that he found out there is a Veterans Commission Committee, and he will be on, actually, they had chosen him to be the Chair of the Veterans Commission, but anyway, he's going to be on the committee, and he will continue to be involved with the Veterans Commission. And I will just probably give my colleagues a copy of all the things that he's done to provide some structure for that organization. And then I talked to Larry Falcon, who is outstanding advocate for the impervious surface fee. Whether or not we want to do it or not, we'll make a decision as a board, and he had a couple people with him to talk about his opinion and their opinion of where we are. We've been working on this, I remember, when I first came in 2019. So as a board, we'll have to decide what we want to do with that impervious surface, and of course, include our residents in that process. And then lastly, I met with Neil Kelly and Bree Moss regarding the countywide accessibility initiatives. They want to start, they have one in the city, it's been since 2017, where they look at any failures that we may have, the city may have, as it relates to the infrastructure in the city of Cincinnati, and what needs to be changed, developed, or stopped. And so they want to start that with the county, and I think it's great. I'm excited about it because disability, we have to make sure that we cover everyone when we're providing services. So I'm glad that they, and I understand they have met with both of my colleagues about that, so we're looking at the possibility of trying to get that started. And so as it relates to what we just went through with the Women and Girls Commission, I also, we would be remiss, as Commissioner Reese had said, to congratulate you on your vision and all this woman power. That's, that's great. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Thank you very much. Also, I attended Francie Pepper's funeral services this past week. Thank you. So many people she's touched over the years. Incredible, incredible loss. Also, attended the Office of Relief Employment Day and 500 Relief Plus Day. I'm going to talk about that more next week, because I like the relief knowledge, so many people involved. Have it up and share countywide, countywide, online, countywide. So I will acknowledge them. I don't have no fear, and we should have some numbers, but I think, but last year, I know we did 1,300 youth employment. Second year, we lined up again, so many people ready to go, beating us to the limit. I will make an announcement next week. Second is, was mentioned earlier, the participate in relief, here being interviewed, all three of us, for the Sisay Black Music Walk of Fame, and also the interviewing, that group. Be a part of that, be some of the, help them get touchless, people, people. I'm excited that Sisay Black Music Walk of Fame, which does not have these markets, we can't market it like, like, even without marketing, we're over $200,000 in visitors. We have a clicker, so we know it's real, real people. And I think that is remarkable. I am for that, for the administrators, because there are times when they write, folks down there, they market, and we participate with some of these groups, and they seem to announce everything except that particular aspect that we have down there. Even without, even when we're being left out, and some of the articles, being left out, some of the marketing materials. I saw one where they changed everything down on the bank except Sisay Black Music Walk of Fame. And even without that, they have 200, over 200,000 visitors, it's unbelievable, and there's so many diverse visitors, of all ages, all races, all that. So just excited about it and can't wait. The other thing, did meet with Kroger's because I just want Kroger, originally when I initiated this idea, the 500 relief, but then it'd be great that we showed that we have some private money, you know, as well as public money, and they had made some commitments. Unfortunately, we never connected. I don't know what happened with the disconnect, but I'm excited that we're back connected, and we're going to have medical Mondays coming soon in October with a partnership with Kroger. I think that's just remarkable. So we'll be hearing more about that partnership, and I was very happy to revisit that and bring that together with our bus that has been doing a phenomenal job. I see another county trying to do what we already been doing, and they're out with advertising and marketing, and I'm here to tell you that we want to make sure that we're out and we let people know that in the state of Ohio and probably in the country, we're first. But not only we're first, but we've helped so many people. We've got about 30,000 services and helping people. We have a very good track record, so want to make sure that we're pushing that as well. And then I had some dates that I just want to reiterate. The third annual small business day will be happening, and it's going to be at the Centi Center. And here, where'd the mayor go? Spending more money in your area, but right here, we're in the Centi Center. May 12th, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., I see Mr. Delongo is here with Allenway, who partners with us, our economic development and our small business, Office of Small Business, and our loan program that no one else has. Mayor, mark this down. We have a program to help small businesses own the building, so they can buy the building. And we're the only, no one has this, and our board has stepped up. We put in almost 50% of the down payment in a 504 loan program. So I know you've got some buildings here, Mayor, and there's some small businesses. So tell them to get there May 12th, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the, at the Centi. And then lastly, we'll have the 503 Relief Day. We always do May 13th, it's 503 Day, and that's the day when we give our, our update, our annual report, who we've helped. Now, this is where we split with the city of Cincinnati, because half of Corinthian Baptist is in Cincinnati, and I think the parking lot is in Norwood. So once again, Mayor, you're winning again. We'll be there on, on May 13th. So wanted to just get those dates that I'm going to keep repeating, and some people can't say they didn't get the date, so that more people can participate. And then also, I did meet with Neil and Bree, I don't know, a month ago or so, and I'm so happy to move forward. I was ready to go. They said, no, slow down. So when they're ready to go, when the board's ready to go, I'm ready to go. I was very involved in the cities. That's how long ago they've had theirs in place. In fact, it was one of the co-authors, and I started working on it when my mother ended up in a wheelchair because of MS, and I saw how hard it was. We got a lot of things done, the curbs that you see in the city of Cincinnati. Back then, taxicabs, because we didn't have Uber, they weren't picking up people in wheelchairs. We had a law pass there. I just learned so many things. Even once in a while, we're trying to get clothes, and the clothes is hitting you in your face. And so that's why with Sisay Black Music Walk of Fame, I want to say, we really went out of our way to make sure it was accessible. We got braille, we've got hearing, where if you're hearing impaired and you can feel the vibration, we've got that. We had a consultant come in, make sure that the levels, areas, it's a walkway so you can get there with your wheelchair. So I know our board has been very intentional in this, and we like to go even further with the county. So as soon as we're ready, I just want to let my colleagues know, I'm in, I'm ready to go, and we want to make sure that the county is accessible. But lastly, we did take a bold step with our money, with, we gave ARPA money, we gave almost $60 million, I think, now, to affordable housing. One of the things we did, we said housing that is accessible, and we partner with land, and it's a, you know, new type of housing that's innovative, and I don't think anywhere else has it, and our board invested in it. So I just want to highlight that, that we're on the move and we want to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to pick up where both of you left off, which is with the Neil Kelly and Bree meeting. I just had my meeting, I think, yesterday, the day before, and asked them to come to a staff meeting to do a presentation to the public, because we've all been informed, but I want to make sure that the public's informed, and then we can bring forward a recommendation or a resolution to establish a committee to study access for people in this community and how the county can respond to those concerns of that community.
I don't like you looking down.
I know, right? I feel like the queen up here. I don't know, Mayor, it's a weird feeling, I don't know. I am taller than everybody, which never happens. So anyway, I've invited them in. Kevin, I don't remember if we got the date settled, but it will be within the next few weeks, and then we can move on some, a resolution to go ahead and establish that. I think it's super exciting for all of our county buildings, for the county in general, and our stadiums, as we redesign the Bengal Stadium. We've all talked about access, so I think they will be very helpful in informing how we can move forward with that building. So looking forward to that. I also, and I did deliver a resolution of condolence for Francie Pepper. We were all there, and so made sure that the family received that. I put it on the table, that had so many things on it, acknowledging her contributions to this community and celebrating Francie. She was a lioness, as we all know in this community, and it was, it's a very sad passing. So out of respect, we did that resolution. I took it over there. I also attended a Colrain Chamber of Commerce meeting. It was at 7:30 in the morning, which is not my best hour to do my best work, but anyway, we did it. And we went out and just, you know, heard from them about partnership opportunities and what they're doing out in Colrain, so it was, it was fun to spend some time with them. I also ran by the 911, it's Telecommunicators Week, and so I ran through 911 the last time in that building during Telecommunicators Week, right? Because they'll be in the new building by next year. So, and it was, it was a stark reminder of why we need to move them out of that building, because it's very dark, it is not up to date, and we desperately need to keep these folks in our employment because they're really important. When you call 911, you want somebody with experience and expertise to answer that phone. So it was fun to go by, but a good reminder of why we're moving. And then I also went to the expungement clinic over at the Public Defender's Office for people that come through on a weekly basis to get their records expunged if they qualify for that. And there were many, many people going through the expungement clinic, and I got to, I became more familiar with the process, so that, and I've been approached by people about how that process works, and now I have just a better understanding of it. So thanks to Ray Fowler for kind of taking me through that. And then lastly, I was on a call this morning about the flooding. We just, people do love to talk about flooding when it happens, and so there was a call about how each community along the river had responded to that and what we're all doing to clean up. And so I got to give a perspective about our, the bank's property in particular. I talked a little bit about the Black Music Walk of Fame and the technology down there and how it was preserved, but how the garage is functioned as it's supposed to. They filled up with water, everything above them, which is where all the development is, I see Phil Beck in the room, survived and didn't get wet because we put everything out of the floodplain intentionally, and then when the water started to recede, we were down there first thing, pressure washing all that gook out of there. So I was happy to represent Hamilton County on that call. So that's all I have. Administrator Ludo, your comments, and I know we have three by leave items as well.
I'm sorry. You, I know that, I think tomorrow you'll be presenting, this is Second Chance Month, and I know that our, our office does a great job, and I just want to say in advance, I support the Second Chance Month, but tomorrow I won't be able to attend, and it's Good Friday for me, and on Good Friday, my family, we kind of, we shut down. So I just wanted to, I didn't want them to think that they don't see me tomorrow, that I don't support it, but I do support Second Chance Month.
Okay. Thank you. Administrator Ludo?
Thank you, Commissioners. I will reserve any comments tonight, just go straight to the by leaves. On your, in your packet, Commissioners, you have three by leaves. Item one and two are really together. This relates to the project that the county is undergoing to advance a study to assess the remaining lots on the bank's development, to obtain a professional opinion on the best way to proceed with future development on those lots that do not yet have public infrastructure built yet on them, as we do on Lot 24, and as we do, obviously, on all the other lots where we have existing uses. So I know Phil Beck is, is here. Phil, would you like to just say a few words about the, the project? There's also item one in your packets, Commissioners, that are by leave item one, which relates to the funding of this, and there- And there is, the total cost of the study is $500,000. $200,000 of that comes from General Electric, which made that contribution as a part of their CRA amendment and their departure from the banks. The remainder will come from the, from the bank's project fund itself, where we have developer payments, parking revenues, those types of things. So Phil, with that, if you'd like to just say a few words about the project itself.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Commissioners. Phil Beck, the bank's project executive. This has been a very interesting process. It's very important to the county, as well as the city, to look at these, and it's also important to the Bengals, as we know, because these lots that Jeff described are surrounding Paycor. We, city-county worked together on the original request for proposals, which were sent out. We received 14 total proposals from all over the country, which is pretty phenomenal. It gave the city-county Reds-Bengals Review Committee a lot of work to do, but they dove right in. Lots of meetings going through this, getting those 14 shortlisted down to four. We had four virtual interviews from that process, then shortlisted down to two, had two in-person interviews, and then the final recommendation before you is what came from the review committee. It was unanimous. The Perkins and Will and KSK team out of Chicago.
Okay, great, thank you. I want, I do want to note that $200,000 of this is being picked up by GE. That was part of the agreement for what, you know, went down on the banks. So I do want to recognize that. One thing I just want to note, I've heard from some of the retailers down on the banks, and they are anxious to participate in the work here. I know there is a committee that's doing the review and getting this started, but I do want to make sure that the major players are at the table, and it sounds like they are, but also the retailers, like the Holy Grail, Taste of Belgium, you know, some of the other folks, they're a little bit smaller but have a vested interest in how this all moves forward. So I just wanted to put that on the radar.
Yes, thank you, President Drehouse. There are actually, within this plan, which goes through this calendar year, Perkins and Will has planned on eight in-person workshops. So as, I think they're going to be picking the brains of the review committee at the beginning and then quickly morphing into the bank's stakeholders. So their input will be very much needed.
Sounds good, thank you. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Only to say that Phil is always very accessible if you have any questions or, you know, you just really don't understand anything. So I thank you, Phil, for your accessibility.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes, thank you. I actually received the information today. And luckily, I came in early today because we had a nighttime meeting. And so I asked Jeff to come down. It was not brought up in our weekly meeting. One of the things, I got a couple issues I want to understand better, because I was not here when the original, there's been a lot. There's been articles, there's been who's on the banks, who's running the banks, what's going on with the banks. And we also have a lease agreement that we are hopefully in negotiation with now, because in that agreement, there's some things that provide limitations, and I'm trying to get that out of as we move forward. And so for me, I just feel like we should, you know, we're supposed to know by June what the Bengals' ownership is going to do, and I just don't understand the rush of, you know, we've waited this long. And for me, I would need a full sit-down on the banks. Who is this committee? Who's sitting on this committee? What are they doing? And I do think that the other businesses should be included, but I also want to go even broader, because we're trying to get people from all over the county to want to come down there to the banks. And I'd like to see something broader to find out what they want to see and why they may or may not come downtown. I run into several people who say, I don't come down there. You know, it's nothing, if I'm not at the Reds game, if I'm not in the, I'm not in the sports, why am I coming down there? What do you have for me? So I just want to, for me, before I can move forward, and I know that my colleagues have been here longer than me, and it's a lot to take in since, you know, even with a short amount of time. I want to find out, who is the banks? Who's on this committee? How are we funding this? And then for me, I don't want to hire somebody that will do what's in the current lease if I'm trying to negotiate a new lease. So for me, I just won't be able to affirmatively be able to move forward at this time. It doesn't mean that I won't be able to move forward at another time, but I just need more time and a full understanding of who is in charge down there and who is voting on this stuff and who is moving forward. Now, we all say, we appreciate what GE did, but GE left. We just got to be honest. And we negotiated out this $200,000, but if they would have stayed down there, we'd have got more than $200,000, you know, by them having all their employees down there eating lunch and eating dinner and meetings down there. So while, you know, $200,000 is cool, but let's be clear, it was not a gift of, you know, a philanthropy gift. This was a negotiation. And I want to commend the administration for going down there and negotiating, at least getting something for the empty buildings and the emptiness that they're leave, that they left down there. So I wanted to highlight that. But for me, I just, it's not that I'm against it, is that I got to get a lot more under, I like to know how it all is coming together. Who's doing what? Who's around the table? Who's doing the meetings? When are they meeting? I read in the paper, we say we give financials to some outside people. Why are we giving them financials? Am I getting the financials as a commissioner? Maybe I am. I just need to have a better, I don't, I didn't have enough time today to be able to get all that moving forward. And I know the chiefs of staffs, they do a meeting with the clerk on what's going to be on the agenda, and sometimes it's two weeks out, I guess. And this did not come up. This came up today. And I just, as I told Mr. Ludo, he's not shocked, I just didn't have enough time to get all the questions answered. But I'm not going to stop it from moving forward. Thank you.
Would you like me to respond to any of those? Or would it be just to set up a meeting?
Sure. Well, I think you might need to come to my office, because I got to know the structure, how it's put together, who's controlling the money, who's sitting on, that's a longer conversation. But if you write down those questions, and maybe we can have a meeting, and then I can have a better understanding as we're moving forward.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I am going to move on these. I've, I don't remember how many times this has been in the administrators' report, so I did have the information I needed. I don't know where the disconnect is, but I'm comfortable moving forward, and I do want to particularly get moving on Lot 24. And these are the lots as well. So I'm going to make a motion to approve of by leaves one and by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item by leave three is really an administrative item. This renews the state of emergency in Hamilton County due to riverine and flash flooding during April of 2025. You remember back on April 8th, we passed a resolution declaring that state of emergency. This just extends it for another seven days. We are still, as you are aware, in the damage, the flooding is down on the river, but we are still in the damage assessment phase. So we want to make sure that we have a state of emergency declared. So as we, to the degree that we uncover damages or financial liabilities, that as we potentially are eligible for state, federal reimbursements related to this, the declaration, the emergency declaration is the bare minimum of what we need to have in place in order to be eligible for that. It also, while the flooding is down, the state of emergency also gives us the ability to take advantage of some provisions of the Ohio Revised Code in terms of emergency procurements, that type of thing. I don't know that I see the need for that right now, given that the flooding is mostly down, but it at least gives us the opportunity to continue to assess damage and track those damages and apply those to our FEMA reimbursement requests. So recommend approval.
Any questions or comments?
So Jeff, I just one question. So Nick Crossley or Eric Becker making that determination every seven days? Who's making that determination?
That was at the recommendation of EMA, and we've done it differently, just depending, yes. We've done it differently depending upon the type of damage or type of emergency it is. I wouldn't want to keep it going for three months or whatever, but we felt that seven days was enough time to continue to do the damage assessment. If we need to, we can, we can extend it again next week if we're still in that, in that phase.
So it was Nick Crossley?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And it's EMA, I'm not sure. I'm not sure exactly who was the one that.
Well, he runs the team, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. I did have a, I guess, more of a comment. I do want to thank our team from the administration, Nick Crossley and everyone involved in this. I do want to say, however, I had asked a couple questions for Mr. Ludo. One is looking at our insurance policy. Of course, we've got the state of emergency, but the insurance policy that we have and what it, you know, what it covers, reexamining it, because also, we have the Cincinnati Black Lives Walk of Fame down there, and we've got a lot of technology. Now, when it was built, the bottom part is in the floodplain, because it goes up, I guess the garage goes up, and as you go up, you're on a garage. But the bottom part entrance on Marion Way is in the floodplain, and we had designed it so that the kiosk, if we knew a flood was coming, we would remove the kiosk. So I know that you're getting some information, but I just want to see what is going to be the protocol moving forward so that, you know, the kiosk could be moved whenever we, hopefully we don't have this again, but if we do, we built it to be prepared for that. In this, in this case, the kiosk did not move. So I do want to just kind of tighten those up and then also look at what type of insurance do we have that would cover, because we aren't, part of it is in the floodplain. So I just wanted to highlight those things, and I know you're going to get us some information.
We do have responses on those, so we'll put that into a report and package it up and get it to you, as opposed to providing it verbally here. But we do have that information for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this resolution, on this call today that I referenced earlier about the flooding along the Ohio, there was a woman on there that talked about still trying to get her communities' damage together for this purpose. So happy that we are looking to extend this, to provide that opportunity. So with that, I'm going to move that we approve of by leave number three.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes my by leaves, Commissioners, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. We have dispensed of the regular agenda items, and so we're going to move into the consent agenda. And Jeff, I'm going to ask you to give us a summary of these items.
I'll walk through this, Commissioners. Item number five is the auditor's statement of financial transactions for March of 2025. Item number six is a budget adjustment. This is a total of $200,000. This is $100,000 for municipal court interpretation services, and then there is some engineer office resurfacing on Euclid Avenue. Item number seven is a resolution purchasing one Ford F-350 for the Engineers Department at $50,965. Item number eight is a credit card charge for Fifth Third Bank for $68.16 in county facilities. Item number nine is a resolution accepting purchase orders for the county and releasing them. There's two of these. The first is for the Sharonville Convention Center. This is for the debt service and the transient occupancy tax model. This is debt service and capital improvements that are paid and out of the waterfall for the Sharonville Convention Center, as well as the purchase order for placement, for juvenile court placement costs. Item number 10, in economic development, is a resolution to enter into a contract with Alloy Development at $350,000. Part of this is $200,000 for the continuation of the 504 loan incentive program that was referenced a little bit earlier in the meeting. There's also $150,000 for the Community Impact Program in Chiviot, Lockland, and Mount Hefei. Item 11 is a resolution entering into the three-year development services agreement with Alloy Development Company. That is the organization that does all, is the county's primary entity for economic development, doing all of our business retention and expansion visits, doing our enterprise zone CRA work, running the Community Improvement Corporation for us, providing general economic development support, that type of thing. So it's at 1.429 million annually. That's a three-year agreement. Item number 12 is a resolution reinstating and amending the grant agreement with the, through the board and the city of Madeira. This is at $300,000. I do want to recognize, I believe Michael Norton Smith from Madeira is here in the audience, if there are any questions for Madeira on this item. Then we have several JFS items, Commissioners. We have a report of the actions of the director for the month of February at $41,339. Item 14 is a renewal of an agreement with Family Nurturing Center for parenting visitation services, 2.4 million. Item 15 is a renewal of an agreement with Justice Works for parent visitation services, 700,000. Item 16 is a resolution reappointing members to the Hamilton County Family Services Planning Committee. Item 17 is authorizing a single-source contract with specialized alternatives for families and youth for foster care services, $100,000. Item 18 is a renewal of the original agreement with Family Nurturing Center for parenting education services at 500,000. And item 19 is the monthly investment report from the Treasurer's Office for March of 2025. Happy to answer any questions, Commissioners.
Thank you. I just have one comment, and I'm glad Pat Longo is in the room. Pat, I just want to say that this money that, in item number 10, that is going to the CIC to help build capacity for some of the smaller communities that are unable to apply for county dollars because they just don't have the individuals or the expertise to do that, it's not right for us to leave them behind. And so this money is so important to these smaller communities to help them build the capacity so they can participate in that. So thank you for doing this work. It's really, really important, and I'm really grateful that we're moving on that. I don't know that we've done that in the past to a large degree, but here we are. And so it's just making for a fairer process. So thank you so much to Alloy for participating in that. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Just a couple comments. Actually, item 12, as it relates to our reinstating and amending the grant agreement between Madeira and the county. I had spoken to Jeff during my one-on-one that maybe we need to develop a policy where when we allocate money to certain entities, that if they don't use that money by a certain length of time, that maybe we need to rethink our, what we're doing with the money. And I understand when there's some changing of what's going to be done in a certain, not picking out Madeira, because I remember when I read about it, that they had made some changes in what they wanted to do. But I mentioned this the last time, I think, as it relates to Lincoln Heights, and that they haven't spent money yet. It'll be going on almost, oh, close to three years. No, we went out there and gave that million, about two years. We need to look at a policy. If you're not able to use the money or something changes, we need to rethink what we want to do with the money. And my last comment.
Commissioner, can I interrupt and say, do you want, there's a gentleman from Madeira here. Do you want him to come forward, or are you good?
No.
Okay.
No, where is he? Where is he?
God love him, he's out there.
Yeah, come on, yeah. I heard you were here.
Okay. Yes, could you provide some context?
Sure, absolutely.
For the item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mike Norton Smith, City Manager, City of Madeira. Thank you very much, first of all, for considering the amendment to the scope. On behalf of council, obviously, the Miami Avenue project is huge for our community. You know, it's a $12 million all-in project, and every little bit helps, and especially we appreciate the support from the county. What happened here was, we had a project that has seven funding sources, and unfortunately, we kind of miscounted or double-counted the funding for one particular part of it. I assure you, there's plenty of costs that we can utilize the funding for, but expanding the scope will allow us to reallocate the funding to other project costs. I think it was originally allocated specifically to a water line. We were successful in securing OWDA funding to pay for the entirety of that, so we can route these, route these other funds to other project costs.
Thank you so much. And your summary that you submitted was excellent, so I'm fully in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And lastly, Drive and Family Services, I had asked Jeff, the next time we talk about how much money we're spending, that we give a total of what we're spending each time, because we're looking at, and I hate to repeat this, but the balance in JFS right now is about 2.5 million. I thought it would be significant if we, I added it up while I was sitting here, and the total was, John's here, oh, boy, but I added it up myself, because I didn't hear Jeff do, and it was about 3.7 million. And I think the public needs to know, as we look at funding children's services, that these services, the cost of services is going up. The number of children has, is pretty stagnant right now, but we need to let the public know how much we're spending every two weeks or so, as it relates to services for our young people. And I don't think, Mayor, where's the mayor? I don't know if I could be on council here, because, you know, as I look up, my hippocampus back here, all the blood is going back, instead of having it in my frontal lobe. And so it's like hard to, to think, but you're, you're used to it and, you know, so, but I can tell the blood is going in a different place. But anyway, thank you.
Is that good or bad, Commissioner?
It's good. But I thank you, Mayor, so that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. I, I like it, by the way. Anyway, Commissioner Reese.
Yes, thank you. On the, I'm supportive of Madeira, but I do think we just had a hearing, or if you will, at our last meeting, dealing with federal funds. And I think we have over 300 million that has flown or is flowing through us. A lot of the projects, and the intention was so that we can help other areas with economic development, because we've got aging infrastructure. Obviously, you've got projects you want to uplift and move forward with, but one of the things with this, say it nicely, with the new thing that is happening on grants, matching funds may be even more difficult. So I would like to ask the administrator, because we may be seeing more that would need to be extended or reworked, because they thought they were going to get some matching funds that are no longer available. And maybe if we could get our hands on those, because I know we put, you know, we do our budget once a year. A lot of places it's two years, and it takes time to get going and get it moving. And now with the fact that you might have thought some other funds would come in to match, but might not be able to match, I just think we need to kind of get our hands on that. And particularly, our municipalities and smaller municipalities will be heavily potentially affected by that. And our grants, you have us with a certain amount, but you're thinking you're getting this, you're getting that, but then that didn't happen. So maybe if we could just kind of get something and writing with an update would, would, would help us, because I think more are going to be asking to rework, because there'll be some others that didn't come through, and I think that would be helpful. I know for myself and possibly for the entire board. So I wanted to put that out there for us. Second thing that I.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Say, do you want, maybe a staff meeting, if we could get an update from Holly related to some of the grant monies that we've allocated and what the status is? That'd be helpful.
Yeah, I think that'll be helpful. And then the municipalities, where are they on, you know, we, we gave them, we appointed for them to have the money. Obviously, they didn't get it yet. They can't get it until they get all the paperwork. But where are they in it? Maybe some have to rework, some might have to extend, maybe they, they're not getting what they thought they were going to get on the original application. I think that would be helpful.
Okay, that's great. We'll put that on the calendar.
Okay. And then lastly, Mayor, you walking out of here with all the money. Alloy is in Norwood, and on here, it's 1.8 million dollars. And so I don't want you to say, we, we left out of here, left you empty-handed. We, we're approving something else in Norwood, so. But again, I just want to say, great work for Alloy. We've been able to leverage our dollars. You've been able to help on a variety of economic development, whether it's large, small, midsize, and we're able to leverage the other grant dollars that you have and loan things that you have, your incubator that you have. So it's been a great partnership, so happy to support again.
Okay, very good. All right, with that, I'm going to move that we approve of Consent Agenda Items 5 through 19.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, there is nothing further to come before us. I do want to once again thank Mary Mountie and the team for your efforts here. The Commissioner of Women and Girls knocked it out of the park again. So thank you for all your dedication and effort.